I've started. Welcome to the Commissioner's Work Session of September 7th, meeting being recorded. Main item of discussion today is PIMIC. And so at this point, could you give us a, you know, I know we lived through it, but can you give us a overview of what we've done so far, where we are, or where we need to go in terms of ordinances and whatever?
Okay. Julia Algen, you guys met me back in February. This is Charlene Brown. She is one of our two.
Billing, billing orders.
Billing orders, I never say their title right. She's one of the two, but she takes on all the new counties. So of course she took on Warren County when you guys became an associate member. You could sign day one with us in February and we could start repricing. What fueled that was the repricing of that high air ambulance bill. So we reprice that, we save you, what was it? Like thirty, no, twenty something thousand.
I wish I had hold it.
I could pull it though. No, it's right here. We save you nineteen thousand. Because it's right here. Twenty-six thousand is what you were billed, almost twenty-seven thousand you were billed, you guys paid seven thousand two hundred and forty-seven. So what we did is every time you guys had a bill, you would send it to us and we would reprice it. The ones that we couldn't reprice, we would still log because we had them. But we wouldn't charge you for those bills or anything. It was only the ones that we could get you guys savings on. Aside from something we always did. I was always helping Rusty when he needed help with the compus applications because we're Act 22 liaison. So that's not a new service you guys got. If Rusty had a problem, he would call. We would walk him through that. So when you guys sent a bill that maybe the person wasn't an inmate, or maybe Charlene needed to work something more with the bill, she would call the hospital, she would call the provider, or she would send, you know, we can't reprice it due to lack of information. So she would work letters and work closely with the providers to be able to get you guys these bills. What we're here to talk to you today about is becoming a full member. So as an associate, we only deal with your outpatient bills. As a full member, we deal with everything within inside your medical department. So we track everything from nursing salary, doctor's salary, your transports out, any medical that takes place in, all the bills we reprice, but we also work that whole inpatient component. So you guys had had a couple inpatients over the past year. And Rusty, once he did the compus, he said, we keep on getting billed, what do I do? What do I do with these bills? And I said, you have to indicate to the hospital that the person has an active medical assistance. So I gave him a template of what we do if you're full members. So basically, when you guys become full members, I take all of that away from Rusty. All he has to do is a compus application. I work all the inpatient bills, she works all the outpatient bills. So I will send them letters indicating inpatient. I will then indicate when they've been paid or how to get paid. I will send them any extra paperwork from DHS that is, sometimes they hesitate on pay or hesitate on billing. When they hesitate, it can go past a hundred and eighty day mark. And with DHS, there's a hundred and eighty day exception unit. So a lot of times when these providers don't get paid, it's because they billed to the wrong unit. So I work with the providers to bill to the prep unit, what paperwork to do, who to connect to, if they have any problems with billing, who to get in touch with and so forth. So Rusty's really looking forward to that because he doesn't like doing that. So I do that. I work on the inpatient side. And I also case manage everybody who goes into the hospital. So I can take that away from your medical department and get, I call the case management department. A lot of times, the nursing staff will talk to the nursing staff on the floor. I call, I talk to case management because they are hooped around with the doctors who know when the person's going to be discharged, what they're coming back with, if it's something you guys can man. If not, I work with the hospital on, and the county on getting them placed at rehab, getting them released from custody, whatever needs to be done. So you guys are given up to date information on your inmate while they're at the hospital. That's another service that we offer through the case management. And that's also part of the full program. We also, as you can see, that paper I gave you, that has all the vendors we work closely with. And we have contracts with. I did see a La, do you guys use Lackawanna Mobile X-ray?
No.
Okay, I saw, so I reached out to the owner of Lackawanna. And I saw a Lackawanna car when I was pulling in, it was pulling out. So if he tells me they can't do it up here, I saw the Lackawanna car. So that's onsite mobile x-rays. So it's the simple x-rays, let's say somebody punches a wall and you don't want to send them out to the hospital. They come, they charge forty dollars for the x-ray and forty dollars for transport. So let's say you have two inmates who get in a fistfight and both of them think they broke their hand. Get them x-rayed, go home the same day, it will be only one forty dollar transport. So they only have to take, they only have to come in and once and take out films at one time. It's only forty dollars to transport the films. So it's forty, forty, that's still a lot cheaper than we can whittle it down in the hospital. I think we can get it down to a hundred and nineteen for a simple x-ray with the Medicare fee. So it's fifty dollars cheaper, you don't have to take guards out, you don't have to accommodate. So they can do x-ray and ultrasound is what they can do. So if you have done ultrasound of a female or something like that, they can do that as well. We have Array Telepsychiatry. Now, you did say you guys did just pay for mental health. I don't know the licensing of your mental health individual if it's counselor or what that person is. But Insight or Array, they are our telepsychiatry company that they provide psychiatrists and nurse practitioners on video conferencing. They're currently in five of our sixteen counties. And we are currently working with Barb Zemlock and CCAP to get the emergent side of that. Right now, it's only scheduled. We're going to do emergent as well. Those are those calls that you, or those individuals you get at two o'clock in the morning who are bouncing back and forth. Instead of having to take them out of the hospital, you can get them on with a doctor on telemedicine, basically. So that contract, that's another contract we have. We have a contract with BioReference, which is for blood draws that you can, you are given a spinner and you're given all the tubes through BioReference. And what we can do when you have it at the hospital, I think we can get a CBC down to ten fifty-eight, something like that. It's two fifty-three with BioReference. So that's nine bucks you're saving with BioReference. And then you send it, either they have a courier. I think they have a courier who picks up at McKean, so you guys aren't far from McKean. We'd probably get a courier to pick it up. If not, you send it via FedEx and it gets to the lab, they spin it, and you get the results right away within two days. So, I mean, it's about the same as the hospital, but you're going to be saving money because again, you don't have to transport the individual out to get the blood draw. It all takes place in the hos, or in the prison.
Who does the draw?
The nurse. So it would be your nurse, your nurse practitioner, your doctor, whoever you guys would utilize. Anybody who can do blood draws can do it.
Do we have anybody that can dust blood draws?
Yeah.
BioHaz is your medical waste, so it would take everything that's medical waste and it's thirty-five dollars for forty pounds. So we have a county that has them come every quarter. And if you go over, it's just whatever the poundage is, but it's thirty-five dollars for forty pounds. So it's a good price for medical waste. And those are your, you know, your gauzes, your insulins, all your needles that you use. It could be, you know, your COVID swabs that didn't take, it could be any of that stuff. Then we have, one thing I did, I was speaking with Commissioner at BioHa, or CCAP, is you guys like your pharmacy. We do have a pharmacy that we use. They provide everything in bubble packing. They have twenty-four hour pharmacy, they have medical supply, they have IV, they have all of that. So maybe if you guys, I'm not going to speak this, that you guys get this, but I know some counties have gotten individuals with heart conditions like bacterial endometritis that need six to eight weeks of IV and biotics. That's not something Warren can handle. Then of course you guys would get them released from custody. But if it's something you guys can handle, Diamond supplies those medications and supplies all the IV tubing and all of that stuff and the pumps. So if you guys ever want to see a pharmacy comparison, that's something we can do. Or you guys can use them for maybe some, some medical medication needs that you might not be able to get through the pharmacy because they are a national brand pharmacy. So maybe you could use both of the pharmacies or maybe you don't use them at all. But they do also have electronic health record. It's something that they built themselves through Sapphire and it's what's in the DOC. So if you guys get DOC, do you guys house DOC at all?
Yes.
Okay, so if you guys were to get their EHR, it's a flip of a switch of getting their record completely flipped over to you and flipped back to them. Because that's why, because the DOC uses Diamond Pharmacy, so they use their EHR as well. Your E, their EHR can interface with our hospitals too, so that if you guys just have Warren General, it could do with Warren General and then you can get, you know, up to date x-rays, up to data R I results, lab results while your inmate's out at the hospital. You can get them transferred into the EHR. That does come with a price tag as all EHRs do. That's not something that you can get for free, I wish you could, but they actually house all your information. So if a server goes down, they have all your information backed up. They take that liability, that responsibility, they will, it all depends, the pricing all depends on how much you want them to transfer into it too. Because the more they have to transfer into the EHR, the more costly it would be. But that's something we also have with Sapphire. Being part of the full program, you can take part in any of those contracts or none of those contracts. You do not have to utilize any of them, but they're there for your using. So you can figure out what would work best for your prison. As I gave you guys the money connected to them. I ran some things with BioReference. There's a county that has to do HIV testing and STD testing on all the inmates. It's part of their Department of Health, they mandate it. And when we were doing the labs, we were coming back and seeing that there was a decent amount of dollars spent on these STD things. So when we talked with this county, we went to BioReference and said, how much would this STD panel cost if they were with you? It was a savings of a hundred, no, two hundred and eighty dollars per patient if they would go with BioReference to what they were paying at the hospital. So there is a, there is a decent savings with the BioReference, a decent saving with the Lackawanna Mobile and with the, with the BioHaz that we have at a certain poundage which costs, or the fact that you guys don't have to take guards to take inmates out and have to do all that logistics. You guys save money for that. And of course, if your mental health counselor is working or your mental health professional that you guys hired and you don't need somebody for prescribing of the mental health medications and stuff like that, you guys don't have to use Array. But with us getting that emergent, that might be something that would be interesting to you to use for those two, three, four o'clock when no other doctor wants to come in or talk or see your inmates. You can get somebody on the phone or on the, you can get them on the web through a thing called BlueJeans and they can see your patient. Now, what we've gotten from the five counties that are using these telemedicine doctors, Psych is the easiest one to go on telemedicine because it's about listening. They don't have to check blood pressure, they don't have to, you know, check your pulse. They have to listen to what's going on. And one of our counties, it's actually one of these northern counties, she absolutely loves her doctor. She said that he is able to pinpoint when a, so well, he's able to pinpoint an inmate's lying. He's able to see through the computer. She's like, I was shocked because I, he was a little leery on it too. That he picked, he picked up, knew exactly what the girl had done, knew that she was not telling the truth. And then he looked at the nurse and he goes, is that, is that true? And she goes, well, not really. And he goes, I didn't think so. Like he could pick up on those things because he's been in sight so long that he was the perfect transit, he was perfect to transition to that type of practice. Now, he still does private practice in his town, but being able to be available, he lives in Texas and he's available to Pennsylvania inmates. We have another county that's using a German doctor in Germany. You can use an international doctor or you can use a domestic doctor. And they're using the German doctor. And I said, can you understand him for the inmates? She's like, his English is better than our whole entire prison. I was like, okay. So there's not that, that they're able to go abroad and not have that barrier of not being able to understand a doctor. So again, you guys are able to use all of those or none of those vendors. And they are part, they are, they are contracts that PIMIC has or that CCAP has for providers. The only one where you guys have to do a separate contract is with Array. So we have a contract with Array and then you would have to do a contract with Array. But it's under our contract, basically. But the rest are like resolutions where you say, I'm choosing to use the service. That's all you have to do with those other ones.
You've gone through the bidding process or you have, you've done the,
Yeah, yeah, we have all of that. That's why we were able to lock in the pricing for BioReference, the pricing for Lackawanna Mobile and the pricing for BioHaz. And they haven't changed and they haven't asked for new contracts or anything.
I have a question. So you listed preliminary notification program for outside treatment. What is, what is that?
What we'll do is at the startup meeting, if you guys come full, if you guys come to the full program, we'll come back for startup meeting, we'll go to the prison. That will be with them. We'll give them a binder with all of the information. We'll track their sick line doctors, we'll do that. The preliminary, we'll give them a paper. It will say Warren County on the top. We ask that the medical department or clerical fill out when a person's sent out to the hospital or sent out for blood work. The reason why we ask that and you fax it to us or you scan it to us because the outpatient go to Charlene and so she can, she knows to look for those bills. Because we love to say that we get every bill that every county gets. But sometimes you think, well, this isn't going to be repriced, so we're just going to pay it, we won't send it. Well, then we can't get a full picture of all the money we saved. Even if dental doesn't get repriced, unfortunately, it does not fall under Act 22. We can work with dentists to get you a ten, fifteen, twenty percent discount. I think twenty's the best. We have one oral surgeon who will give us some Medicare rates and that's it. We have one oral surgeon in Pennsylvania that will do that. But dental is one of the ones that a lot of counties say, well, we can't get that repriced, so we'll just pay it. And then we don't see, and then it looks like you guys aren't sending anybody for dental. And I'm like, lucky for you guys, you have no people using that or anything that had problems with your teeth. So, so the preliminary helps us track. So of course you would send a preliminary on everybody. Let's say you send, we're going to say Susie Smith, sorry if you have an inmate named Susie Smith. But let's say you're going to send Susie Smith to the hospital. You're sending her for abdomen pain. You're going to send that to us. Let's say you send it to us at two o'clock this afternoon. She's not going to be inpatient by the time the workday's over. So then I'll message out to you guys tomorrow and say, did Susie Smith come back to the prison? You'll say, no, they kept her. So then I'll call out to the hospital and say, what's going on with Susie? Why, why, what's her blood? Like I get all the information I can get. Vital signs, all the blood work they did, all the scans they did. Because then that's also going to give you the better information if you guys can take Susie Smith back. But it's also going to say what the bill's going to look like. When they're doing every scanning under the sun on them, you know that the bill's going to be a little bit higher. So it's, it's like a, you know, dual purpose. We can see what's going on with the patient and if the patient can come back. But then also what you guys will look like, what it will look like either coming out of your escrow account or what it will look like paying it when we repricing it if she ends up not getting a patient. So the prelim, preliminary, there we go. The preliminary is just a communication between the prison and us to know who's going out and what's going on with the patients.
If you get different authorizations filled out so the hospital knows they can communicate with you on this stuff, I suppose.
If your, I normally do not have issues with hospitals. I call on us, the way I call and I say my name is Julia, I'm the nurse consultant for Warren County Prison. Or I'm the nurse consultant for McKean County Prison. I am calling to talk to case management. I go to case management, I give them the name and the date of birth. And I've often normally had case management talk to me at every hospital like that. The only one I've ever had a problem with was when UPMC took, UPMC.
UPMC?
That didn't sound right for a second, sorry. Took over like a moderate sized prison in central PA. When they became them, I had a harder time getting information. But then all I had is the warden call over and say, hey, you can give this information to Julia. And since then, they've given it. So I don't know how your guys' hospital works or how this county works. If you guys have to give authorization, then you have to give authorization. But I haven't had to, I case managed in twenty-one, no, nineteen counties. And I haven't had to ever get authorization, like an authorization signed for myself.
Okay. So next step is disagreement?
The ordinance and the bylaws. I brought another one for you guys, just in case. I know Charlene wanted, this is the next step. So you would do the ordinance. And then of course I brought another copy of the bylaws. And then at the back of the bylaws, it would be, let's say you guys shot to do it October first or whatever, or you shot to do it November first. This is still good. This is what Kirsten gave you, this is what I sent. This is still the good pricing. If you guys wait until January one, we'd have to get the ADP for all of twenty twenty-one. And then this might change depending on what the ADP was for twenty twenty-one. But we got this, I think I got this from you or Rusty like in August. So this is, this is based on if you sign with us till December. If you don't do the ordinance and you don't become full members until the beginning of January, then we would have to get another ADP for the year of twenty twenty-one.
We have not revised the ordinance yet, right? Ten or two D process?
Do you need to move on back up to RFP?
No. You have the,
Ordinance, yes.
Twice?
Yes.
Ten days apart or something. Yeah, that's, we can get it going. Would be October first probably at this rate, but.
Okay.
We shoot for November first.
Yeah. It doesn't have to be the first of any month either. I mean, we, it could be like October sixteenth or whatever. I just said with that, I was trying to tell you that if you go until December thirty-first, this, this rate's locked in. If not, then January first, we would need to get another one and give you guys a new rate. And of course, it's a down payment of twenty-five percent and then a monthly payment.
Well, to you, I would, we would just rush into, I mean, as quickly as possible.
Okay.
Brought it before the prison board and the prison board was really supportive of it, so.
And one thing Charlene wanted to share with you is when she did the repricing, she'd like to share with you what you guys have saved in just a small amount of time that you guys have been with us.
Yeah, so I would say the total of your bills so far have been about hundred and fifty thousand dollars and you have saved about hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So you've only made like thirty thousand.
Wow.
Yeah. So that's based on like the Medicare rates, an inmate that's like not an inmate or what with COVID right now, getting lab testings. The Provider Relief Fund covers that. So that's how we've been able to save you some monies.
So she, she actually sent a letter, like she sent a letter on how she worked. When COVID happened, she worked with the Provider Relief Fund, with CMS, she worked with all of them to figure out, there's this fund here, why, why are we making our counties pay? And so what ended up happening is, is anything that came with COVID, she sent, you know, a denial and it needs to go and be billed to the Provider Relief Fund. We were told there's still money in there. So until we're told there's no more money, then.
I think there's still like twenty million dollars in the account or something like that. That's what I love. I don't know where that money came from, but wow, yeah. So if we can utilize that, why not, you know?
So that's just from February. Just think of what a whole year would look like with us and a whole couple of years would look like with us.
Yeah.
So.
Do we know what we usually spend every year on inmate care?
Unfortunately.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure it does, but I'm just trying to get a handle on comparison to.
I don't know, okay, I can't.
Maybe you and me.
Six years, for sure.
For inmate only?
Yes.
And that's the agreement that we have with the hospital for X percentage charges?
Correct. Yeah, the numbers that Charlene just gave, they are like full price. And this is what we're paying. Like, we wouldn't have paid that full price even with Warren General. It wouldn't have been a percentage. So, I mean, it's still a huge savings.
Yeah, I think you guys had said, because we've talked with Warren General. Or we talked with finance here that was talking with Warren General. I can't remember who we talked with. But it was about the whole, because the agreement changed or something. They were looking for either a little bit more money or they were looking for less money or something like that. Because we started sending these bills back. And that's what you guys in February had said is that you feel like you would have gotten, you know, the conference. Because if you guys were used to paying fifty percent of the bill or even forty percent of the bill, this is like ten percent of the bill, if not five percent of the bill. And it is, we try to tell when we talk to hospitals, what would you do if this person was on Medicare? This is what you would get if this person was on Medicare. You know, and then.
That's what it's comparable to is Medicare rates.
Yeah, it's Medicare rates. It's Medicare rates for outpatient, it's Medicaid for inpatient. But that's Act 22. Like they couldn't, because you guys are a county that participates in Act 22, they had to take that for any inpatient. It's not like you guys, I'm not on what for you guys, because I'm trying to say that. It's not like you have a revolving door of the amount of people who go out to inpatient. You're not a, a big, big prison like Allegheny or Philadelphia or Delaware or Montgomery, which tend to have two to three inpatients a week. So it's not going to hurt them for those, those hospitals. They don't like it. But Act 22 came into play and they don't fight it. And if they do fight it, we just come back and say, this is all you're getting. Like, I mean, per Act 22, it's capped at outpatient, it's capped at inpatient. So.
The inpatient, I'll bet you we've had on average maybe one or two a year. And that's, I mean, we can have inmates go over there and spend a couple of days, but their classification doesn't.
They mark them as observation.
Correct.
Which, the hospital thought they were getting a lot more money with observation, but there's no, like they rolled that code out a couple of years ago and there was no definitive. Because your hospital could say that five hours equal one unit. But Allegheny General could say two hours equal one unit. So there's no concise thing to say what a unit is and CMS did not do that. So when those type of bills come, observation gets zeroed out because we have not gotten a definitive answer from any of the people in Medicare, Medicaid, none of it, on how to, and again, how's it fair that Warren General would say, you know, four hours was one unit. But then Allegheny would say two hours is one unit, because then Allegheny's going to make more money than Warren, Warren General would. You know, so it's like because there's no concise thing, we don't, we don't repricing because we can't.
I've actually been cross-maintain of class for almost ten years now. I've been doing inpatient bills. I have never had any problems with any of the hospitals, no questionings. Maybe once or twice, if they did call, like they did not have an issue. They'd be like, oh, okay. I did recently, I was able to give one of the counties back almost forty-two thousand dollars from the Husport APY Fund.
Yeah.
One of the bills, they paid them full. I called the hospital, called the connection I had there. And they refunded forty-two thousand dollars back because they tell me, no questions asked. I was like, all right. So it's good. I have a lot of time to talk to other hospitals, so.
That's what worked in a long time. Well, did.
I was wondering if we could get proposals or some type of information on the kind of a la carte programs, like especially the Array program. It's something that we probably want to talk to Kerry about, but, but I mean, I can't, I have, we've been trying, we've had conversations about telepsychiatry over there for a long time. Try to reduce the wait times to get people seen and even if it was scheduled, I have to assume that it would be, it had a huge asset to us.
So. With Insight, what, what the price is, is first of all, what we really like about this is that you're given a bunch, let's say you decide that you want to do a doctor, you want to do an MD. That's a hundred and eighty-five dollars an hour. You can schedule as little as two to as much as four, six, eight, ten, however many hours a week you need. You're going to get that same doctor every week. So that's a continuity of care. They're seeing the exact same doctor. And if you choose to do a nurse practitioner, that's cheaper, that's a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Same thing would go with them. You would get that same nurse practitioner. The way that, those individuals have to be licensed in Pennsylvania. You guys do not have to pay for the licensing. So let's say they float some, they float some resumes your way and you meet those doctors over, if you guys have Polycom, it goes over Polycom. If you do not, it goes over like a laptop and you get the program BlueJeans, which is theirs. You'll meet those doctors. You can figure out if those doctors work for your facility. So you guys don't have to just go with whatever doctor they give you. You're able to interview those doctors. So those are the prices for, like I said, the doctor and the nurse practitioner. I can, I can get a contract, a mock contract for you guys. Or I can talk to Kirsten about seeing the blank contract that we had in the RFP. So you can see what the contract looks like for Array. I can get you the pricing list for BioReference. Like I said, with BioReference, Lackawanna Mobile and BioHaz, those are all ones where you just say, you, you just write a resolution that you're joining that contract or you're utilizing that. Same with Diamond as well. But again, when I talk with the commissioner, you guys are happy with the pharmacy you have. So I'm not going to push pharmacy, I'm not going to push any of these vendors on you guys. Like I said, they're there for you to use. You don't have to use any of them. We have a county that doesn't use any of them. They're in the full program, but they use all the vendors that are within their county. So I can, like, I'll talk to Kirsten when I get back to the office tomorrow to see, you know, without you guys being a full member. So I can, like, I'll talk to Kirsten when I get back to the office tomorrow to see, you know, without you guys being a full member, I don't know if I can share it with you guys, but I'll ask her if I can because you would want to see it. I won't ask Array to draft you a contract yet, but you'll be able to see what they can give you guys. And like I said, you guys can, I can also, in the email, I can include the counties that are utilizing them. I could encourage you to reach out. You can reach out to Warden Coolidge, they're using it. You can reach out to Warden Nye in Columbia, they're using it. You can reach out to Warden Cormac and Mifflin, Warden Ekinlaw in Bedford. I'm going to forget. Oh, Warden Bishop in Wayne. Those are the five counties that are using them. You can reach out to them or have, you know, your medical department reach out to the nursing staff and figure out, how are you liking this? Marcia G. over at Tioga will sing nothing but Dr. Wyatt's praises. That is who she is currently using. She absolutely loves him. You will hear her sing nothing else about him. And what we're seeing is in the smaller counties, there's not even a practicing psychiatrist, even in the county lines. And so this has been very helpful for those counties. And of course, we've heard that psychiatry practices are trying to go telepsychiatry themselves and not even have patients come in or do it that way. So why not go with the contract that we already have? You guys don't have to go searching and you have, you know, a world, worldwide doctors at your fingertips to choose from. So yeah, I'll talk to Kirsten about that and then send them an address this way.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
No, I just say that I support this 100%. It's a great program.
Why don't we go ahead and put in the full draft papers?
The only thing I would request is just take a look at what our historical costs would be, just for my personal frame of reference, to understand, you know, what that is. So if I can get that for 2020 or 20, for six months or 2021, that would be great. As it relates to inpatient, because that's really what we're talking about, right?
Well, yeah, because we already do your outpatient, so it would be inpatient as well.
Yeah.
Staff questions?
Any comments, thoughts, Lisa, or?
Do you have that ordinance or the draft?
Oh, if I have both of them, right here. See if it's law. A Jake Bolling movie.
All right, well, if we don't have any further questions, comments, then I guess we will put this out in the near future. I assume they would have you back in person, but.
It will be back in person once it's adopted.
Is this the agreement they would sign?
No, the, the.
Those are the bylaws.
Those are the bylaws, yes. And then the ordinance was the other one, yep.
So we'll fill that out.
And then, yes. So we would just ask that you communicate with us when you're putting the ordinance out. So we know to roughly, again, if you guys are, again, it doesn't have to be October 1st. It doesn't have to be November 1st or December 1st. You can put it out, you can put it out this week and give it the 10 days or the two weeks and then you give it 10 days rest and then put it out again or whatever. If it's mid-October, we can come up mid-October. I was just, again, saying that sometimes we see counties like to do it on the first of the month or, you know, for county reasons, do it that way.
I think we probably should for the first, sorry, the second Wednesday of October, if that's not reasonable. Just make the ordinance effective on the first, so.
Sure.
So.
Yeah, just, just talking and everything, it sounds like a great program, so.
I'll scan that and get that over to you so you can review it.
Yeah, any agreements or whatever, yeah, very good.
And then we'll, once, once you guys become part of the full programs, then we'll work with Warden Collins and the staff to come back up here and we'll do the, we'll do the startup meeting and that's normally like a two hour plus meeting. So whenever you can, just call that in your day.
Sure.
It'll be something that we do then.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much for traveling up here and giving us more information.
No problem. And again, we're available by phone, by email if you have any issues or calls or any doubts or concerns. Once you become, one thing we like to also stress is once you become part of the full program, call us. A lot of times you still think to call CCAP. Call us for everything. And then if it's a CCAP thing, then we'll, we'll go to Sarah or we'll go to Desiree or we'll go to Ginger or something, but call us. A lot of times we'll get a call from CCAP on the new member and they're like, they called us. And I was like, we told them to call you guys. And so we just want to let you know, even during, if you guys are being on associate program, if you have questions about bills or anything like that, give us a call or send us an email.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Save us all that. All right, next topic, another, Mr. Rogers, has some questions.
Oh, the only, the only request that I have specifically is to allocate $500 from the Actur Team Fund to the Alligene Refund Up, which we've done previously. They made a request in writing, the support this year is coming up. $500 goes to Porta Potty's equipment stuff for the volunteers. And it's a kind of a standard violation that we do.
Is it this year?
It's September.
12.
12.
Oh.
It's way around the border.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's September, what is it? It's Friday, Saturday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. So.
So it's, like, either way, it's like next week.
Okay.
So.
Today's the 7th. Yeah, today's the 7th, so it's this week. It's five days from now. The 12th, right?
A little bummer what you're saying, so. Anyway, I was just asking, I'm, I was thinking I might participate this year, but this is not okay.
It would be difficult.
Anyway, we've done this previously.
Yeah.
Because we have money.
It's good. I'm supportive.
And then the DSP. It had to do with the direct support professionals, recognition.
It's a resolution, right?
No, no, I had, I had, what I wanted to do is use, you know, like, I think it should be less than 500, but something in that range to, like, from the endowment funds.
Okay, so that could be an endowment meeting.
Exactly.
Okay. Okay.
When, when is that? We would have to set that.
It's on the 13th. So, and then they would just hand me a bill when they're done. So it's next Monday. Basically, we're going to Almondsville and then down to Pennsylvania, to the Achievement Center. Basically set the ice cream truck up in the afternoon and then give ice cream to the DSPs in both locations with multiple agencies being able to come down and partake.
So I need to just set up a big quick endowment meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Need policy procedure project updates. The meeting tomorrow, light agenda.
Very light agenda.
Cycling events, agreements and repository tax visits. Oh, no, and you have one on the US, oh, no, that's for the election board meeting, sorry.
Yeah, put the election board.
Got to leave one of those shores.
Everybody's happy so far.
Is there anything?
Is that it? Is that what makes the difference?
Yeah, because tomorrow you will have the election board meeting, a public meeting and a public meeting.
Dan, did the warden get back to you this morning?
He put stuff on my desk.
Okay. All right.
Stuff's on your desk?
But you didn't know what to do with it either, he left it for you?
Oh, yeah, I talked with Rusty and he said he passed the message along, any email later or stuff.
Yeah, he brought him the notebook and, and the pricing, but he didn't say. Said he was going to be over to take a look at it.
Yeah, I, all right, I'll follow up with him. Schedule wise, my schedule is still up in the air with medical stuff, which will be here long for the meeting, if not, it'll be here with the committee.
Oh, yeah, I guess so.
Can I pick next on Thursday? Public Safety Fair members on the 11th as well as the 9th and 11th, so. Wildlands.
There's Wildlands this weekend?
I think so. Yeah, correct. Oh, also I was asked to invite you to a fundraiser on Sunday for the Veterans Associate, Veterans. The affiliate, the association, I forget the full name of it. Anyway, there are any fundraisers at the Cabinet Alliance on Sunday. Last time it was like a spaghetti function.
Is it similar to the thing that we went to?
Couple years ago. Yeah. I think it's the same thing.
Okay. That's Sunday?
That's what I was.
Tell us something. Want to do your time it is?
We've extended to, to. Dollars to the person.
I'll take it.
Dollars.
Yeah.
That's it. Executive session, yes? Oh, no?
I don't think it needed, I don't know. I think that because I'm a personnel.
Okay, so that's a brief executive session for small reasons. So at least I assume you can stay.